Thank you.
Fair enough.
All right. Thanks for being here this evening and thanks for joining us either if you're watching on grassroots or on WebEx. Thank you, thank you. Tonight is the Aspen City Council's special meeting scheduled for December 8th, 2021. That'll be a call to order. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Yes.
Councillor Howenstein.
Present.
Councillor Mazero.
Present.
Councillor Richards.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here.
Uh, all right. So, a few things before we get started. The Sister Cities Room over there, if anybody would like a little extra space or if you want to get a chair, the Sister Cities Room over there is set up so that we are broadcasting as well, if anybody wants to use the other room. Uh, the other announcement that I'll make is that, um, in, uh, meetings like this, special meetings for emergency ordinances, uh, public comment is not necessarily taken, but tonight we will be allowing some public comment, okay? So, everybody just hold on to yourselves. We will be limiting that public comment to about two minutes. Uh, we want to hear your points, we want to hear your input, but we also want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. And if you notice, this is a pretty full room, as well as about 75 people that are online as well. So, we're gonna try to get through everybody that wants to speak, but I do ask, uh, you know, that you are respectful. One of the things about being respectful when you're speaking is, we're not looking for applause. Um, if you agree with somebody, that's great, uh, we want to hear from you as well, but applause really doesn't, uh, get the point across anymore to us. So, I'm just asking you, just refrain from your applause as we try to get through everybody's comments. Uh, other than that, I ask for your patience this evening. You know, uh, the city council is up here in the best interest of our community. That is the way, the way we operate and what we try to get done. You are our community, so we are here to work with you. Many of you were caught off guard or shocked or whatever it may be about the nature of this emergency ordinance. I want to keep in mind, everybody, regardless of what newspaper headlines are out there, uh, this is not a ban on short-term rentals. We have approximately 1,400 short-term rental permits that are valid and will continue to be valid. We are not stopping STRs right here with any actions, okay? That's number one. Number two is, when it comes to some of the redevelopment of residential, this council is interested in a pause to set a level playing field. Last thing we want to be doing is making code changes in an environment that is uncertain for anybody out there. So, this is an opportunity for us to take a break together, engage our community, and express what we want to do in order to make our community as close to what we envision and what we all aspire to. And when I say "all," I know that you share the same values that we do as well. So, with that, let's all be cooperative and work together. This is not an adversarial relationship. We represent you, we work for you, and we are working in your best interest. I promise you that. So, with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. We're gonna have a little bit of introduction about, uh, items that have come forth from last night, uh, and then we'll, uh, start having discussion. Philip?
Thank you, Mayor Torrey and council. Uh, for the record, my name is Philip Sapino. I'm the Community Development Director. Ben Anderson, the Principal Long Range Planner, is joining me as well. With your permission, I'd like to share a presentation.
Please.
Appears as though you can see my screen. So, I'll walk you through briefly, uh, a couple of changes that have been made in the intervening 24 hours to respond to some council comments last night. Uh, to remind council and the listening public, this is the second reading of an emergency ordinance. Uh, Ben and I distributed a red-lined version of the ordinance to council moments ago that is on your desk. Those red lines show the changes from the version that was entertained at first reading last night. For the public, there are hard copies of the ordinance behind you at the back of the room if you're interested in following along. Uh, again, a brief presentation, uh, by staff, and then we're happy to entertain questions from council at that time. Uh, so, changes from first reading. Additional language was added regarding, uh, the relationship between housing, workers, and community health and safety. Those were added to the whereas statements, I believe, on page two of, uh, your ordinance. The language in section five, if you're following along at home, around, uh, vacation rental permits, pages seven to eight, was amended. Uh, specifically, the extension date for 2021 permits is proposed by staff to be extended to September 30th, 2021. Or, excuse me, '22, that is a typo in the presentation. 2021 permits would be extended to September 30th, 2022. Uh, that is in response to some discussion among council last night. Additional language was included, clarifying the transfer of short-term rental permits between owners of a specific property. I can go into the details of that language if you'd like me to. And some grammar and punctuation errors were found, uh, by the, our diligent staff, who is very interested in making sure that all Oxford commas are present in listed sentences in the ordinance. The effect of the ordinance, again, to pause significant residential construction for a period of six months as defined by, uh, by the ordinance, to exempt commercial lodge 100% affordable and minor residential work as described in the ordinance, to pause the issuance of 2022 short-term rental permits, those would be 2022 short-term rental permits, not existing 2021 short-term rental permits. Staff's recommendation is to extend the '21 permits, again, to September 30th, '22. We can, we can, we can discuss the rationale behind that date, um, if you'd like to. And staff recommends allowing transfers of permits between owners, but not between properties. So, to put it another way, the addition to the ordinance would allow one owner of a piece of residential property to transfer the short-term rental permit to the next owner of the same piece of property. Some numbers, as of 4:00 PM this afternoon, 182 new short-term rental permits were applied for through the city's MuniRev system. The finance and community development staff responded to 101 of those, um, applicants for either additional information or processing. 81, again, as of 4:00 PM, are awaiting a response and processing. And to be clear, again, mostly for the, for the, for the, uh, the public, any short-term rental, 2021 short-term rental permit which was applied for today, December 8th, will be processed. That is, of course, has to comply with city regulations, so it has to be a compliant unit in the right zone, district, et cetera, but anything in the queue today will be, will be processed by finance and community development. The bottom line, if you are a 2021 short-term rental permit holder, your permit will remain valid until a date established by council, by ordinance tonight, should council choose to adopt ordinance 27. No '22 permits will be issued until new regulations are in place, should council choose to do so. And again, permit applications accepted today will be processed as they will be in the queue. Staff recommends the changes with respect to September 30th and the transfer of ownership. These changes are reflected in the draft ordinance. Again, in response to some discussion, uh, with council last night, as well as with the members of the public and staff today, um, should council adopt ordinance 27, staff is, uh, will prepare a project plan for the work to be conducted during the moratorium timeframe. That would include scope of any potential project amendments, or, uh, excuse me, code amendments, uh, staff and resourcing needs, the timeline for the project, and most, most specifically and importantly, a public outreach and stakeholder engagement plan. And again, should staff, should council choose to adopt ordinance 27 tonight, there would be a specific process run for short-term, for the short-term rental regulation development process and a specific outreach process. This would be envisioned as being separate from the other moratorium work, and it is proposed that staff conduct a stakeholder and public outreach forum in early January to ensure the public is properly informed about the short-term rental landscape during the regulatory development process and up to whenever the, the existing short-term rental permits would be extended to. Staff, staff recommends council approve ordinance 27 on second reading tonight, as it is an emergency ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, council members, questions? I want to bring up, uh, the suggestion of the, the date, um, valid until September 30th. Um, I, you know, that was kind of done in, a little bit in response to some of the things that we heard last night, uh, but over the last, uh, evening and today, uh, my thoughts are actually maybe thinking of it differently and to make that shorter, not longer. Um, you know, my hope is that we can get in and out of this as quickly as possible, um, not to continue it. So, I, I would want council members, and, and we're gonna take some comments, so I would ask that you just think about it, um, as we, as we're hearing comments or whatever, but think about it, what it means for us to set a shorter time period, try to get through at least, uh, and some of, some of the items in this. For example, there, there's a definite separation here of the STRs and some of the other regulations that we're looking at. And so, for me, I'm, I'm wondering if we can possibly, uh, move that forward quicker and, and, and return the answers that the community is looking for sooner than later. We can, we can speak to that later, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond as a point of order for, for staff, the rationale for staff on the September 30th date is anticipating that the work is done in quarters one and two, but that there's an issue with summer bookings for these business owners and allowing them to continue to book their summer schedule. Um, and then an implementation date of any changes can be a, a point of discussion in the public involvement process and at the council table during first and second quarter in order to recognize that. However, we didn't want to stop the permits, um, uh, in the middle of, of a high season, in essence. It's why staff, staff is recommending September 30th. Do you want to add anything that Philip or Ben?
No, I, I think that describes the dynamic that staff was conscious of, both in response to council comments last night, as well as considering the timing issue this morning.
And I would say that, um, there's always future bookings going on. So, so continuing it to September 30th, uh, just leads you into bookings for, say, next summer as well. So, I, for me, I'm just thinking that we have the ability to make process, to make some decisions and put, institute whatever regulations we're looking for in 2022, uh, and I think we could get through that, uh, in a, in a better amount of time than continuing them all till September 30th. And that, that was the thinking that I had over the last night, so...
I, I guess I would just be concerned, I would not want to say, okay, it's, uh, just four months, eh, ends in April, eh, but we're having to extend it for three months because it's not complete. Or, you know, I, I would rather allow these people to be able to book the units that they have, that are appropriate, that will be booked this year, and, and not have the worry or the pressure of summer season, summer season. We're gonna start hearing that in February, we're gonna hear it in March, eh, and, and I, I don't think that we should put that type of pressure on it or uncertainty on the others, that what if council extends it further? What if council extends it further? And that's gonna be the fear. It's like, let's take that fear out now. We're completing the work as soon as possible and as soon as it's thorough and we've done this appropriately, but not to, to say, um, "Well, we're giving ourselves an unrealistic 90-day deadline, but don't worry, we're gonna extend it out another 90 days after that and maybe 90 days after that." And that's what happens with moratoriums in other communities. I've seen it, I don't think that's gonna happen here, but to my mind, it takes away the fear of an extension by saying right up front, "You can book your summer business now through Labor Day, through Ruggerfest," you know, that's it. Eh, but it's separate from the work product and getting the work product done as quickly as it can be.
Yep, I appreciate that. I'm sharing another point of view and, and I, I still, I, I think that I would like to make some decisions and get out of this sooner than later.
But if that's gonna be a reason to vote no, I will change my position, but I, I don't know that's where we're at.
Well, first of all, I didn't say anything about unreasonable 90 days, and I didn't say I was voting no. I'm bringing something up for council consideration. And thank you for that. Ward?
Yeah, I, I'm noodling this as well, and I, I guess I have a question. I would like, I'll, I'll just throw this out for consideration, but, um, a question as well. If we get these regulations done, and everybody I've communicated to about this is that we are gonna give it full consideration, that this is not gonna be a rushed, um, regulations, but if we get it done in four months, let's say, um, Sarah, in your, in staff's position, will the new regulations, if there are new regulations, would they apply to everything after, uh, the new regulations are in place? Um, so that reservations may be made up to September, but if in June the new regulations are ready, do those reservations from June to September have to comply by the new regulations?
So, if it's a holder of a 2021 STR permit, it would extend till September 30th, 2022. If someone comes in new in 2022, they have to follow the new rules. The extended permit will stay under the old rule, rules until that permit expires. So, there will be an overlap where both set of rules could be in place in the community through whatever the expiration period is. So, that, that's, that is a possibility, um, you know, and it's a, it's the trade-off of creating some predictability for your current permit holders.
So, it's conceivable that we'd have reservations for the same time period, uh, reservations with two different sets of regulations that apply?
Yeah, it's contingent upon, because we don't know the scope of those regulations, it's a little hard to crystal ball the impact for you.
Right.
Um, and so, I thank you for the grace in understanding that. But I do think, uh, you should anticipate, whatever the date is, there's the possibility that new per, once we open up to accept new 2022 permits, there will be a period of overlap for accepting two, and two, basically two programs running simultaneously until that extension expires.
Okay, and then the thing that I wanted us just to marinate on and don't really need to comment on it now, because we, I know there, there are a lot of people that want to make their thoughts known, is, um, I just thought perhaps we should have that reservations made by date X, um, are honored, and after, after that, they can't make new reservations. But I understand and the balance that's needed between certainty for people making reservations for the summer and our desire to, uh, try to rein in what we feel are some detrimental effects of some S, some STRs. I see extending through, uh, September, honestly, has been a, basically another year of the status quo, what we have now with, uh, what, uh, a lot of us feel are, uh, some out-of-control situations. So, I'm just asking you to noodle on that.
Uh, thanks. Uh, any other council comments, questions, or?
I just, I just said before we jump in, you know, I'm really excited to be at this table with a unified group that's working on something really important. Uh, and when a new idea comes forward, I take it with no threat. Ward was talking about the implementation day. I appreciate him bringing that forward. That's what we do here, we'll have a discussion, and we'll be unified in how we respond.
All right. Uh, with that, um, we'll take public comment. I'm gonna start on this side of the room, in the front row.
Carolyn, just kidding.
Coming over? Any comments? Front row, come on up.
Yeah, let's get the spider there.
Get the puck.
There we go.
What's that?
It's part of the broadcast.
It's in the microphone.
I'm Bill Guth, I live on 8th Street. Uh, thank you all for your service and for considering our comments tonight. Uh, I, I think, to be brief, over 600 people have signed a petition that, I believe most of them are, are residents, homeowners, property owners in the city of Aspen, opposing your actions tonight. I don't know how many people you'll hear supporting your actions tonight, other than the five of you and maybe some, maybe a few here, but I think most in this room are vehemently opposed to what you're doing. I think there are better ways to accomplish your goals. I'm not opposed to affordable housing, I'm a champion of affordable housing, I'm a champion of responsible management of short-term rentals. Uh, I, I think you need to focus on the long-term impacts and focus on the long-term goals. I don't think things can be accomplished in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, six months. You have to look out a decade and work on projects that are actually gonna make a difference, and that restricting people's livelihoods and damaging people's livelihoods does not make that difference. And I don't think all of you understand the impacts to many of us here and the community at large, and our communities down valley and elsewhere throughout Colorado, that these actions have. And I ask you to carefully consider those. A lot of our financial livelihoods are dependent on it, a lot of people's, um, eh, that's all I have to say, but that, we have over 600 signatures, and by the way, we only started this at 1:00 PM this afternoon, so I can only imagine what 30 days would accomplish.
Bill, a quick question for you, if I could?
Please.
Do you, do you rent short-term rentals?
I do not rent any short-term rentals in the city of Aspen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Uh, next over, still staying in the front row, going this way to the front row. We'll go to the second row, and we're starting on that side, we're heading this way. Yep, come on up.
Sup, Skippy? My name's Chris Burley.
Hi, Chris.
Former Aspen resident, currently live in Carbondale, because we couldn't buy up here, because there's a lack of affordable housing. I think that we all know that that's a problem. I am currently in the real estate business. Uh, my wife is, uh, in the luxury concierge business up here. She operates a, a business that employs two different girls that live here in town. Um, they service short-term rentals, and the effect that this, uh, you know, motion would put on our household, we just had a child, we're, we're raising that child in Carbondale right now, um, would be devastating. You know, my main client here in Aspen is someone who works in the residential development. And I, I want to just say that, you know, their business is beautifying some of these neighborhoods. They're tearing down old houses, yes. Have you taken into consideration that some of these old houses, from an ecological standpoint, might be more wasteful than what they're actually building in, in the place of that? Um, the idea that what you're passing tonight from any scope or form is gonna improve the affordable housing situation here is, is ludicrous. I think if you guys want to improve affordable housing, you need to maximize density on projects that you currently already have, like the lumberyard. Do you know how much open space you guys have between here and Woody Creek that you guys could go actively build on? If you go to Summit County and look at what they've done over there, they built thousands of units over the last 20 years. It takes you guys three, four, or five years to get projects going, to build a few hundred? Let's see action from you guys, not attacks on industries that quite frankly prop up the Aspen economy. I would argue that the majority of small businesses in this valley are centered around development and real estate in this town and short-term rentals. And we're talking, you know, I don't see any folks from down valley that speak mostly Spanish here, but, you know, you're talking about thousands of jobs, potentially, in this Aspen area that you guys are gonna be affecting, and households, and not only jobs, but small businesses that employ other people. And I think you guys should strongly consider, you know, at least taking the time to hear people's voices and hear them out before you make these decisions tonight. And, you know, that's pretty much all I have to say at the moment. I have a lot more ideas and input, you know, regarding specifically the solid waste issue. Uh, I think that there's, there's a ton of options out there for that. Uh, I, I think that there's just options that, that need to be considered more carefully before just being irrational about your decision-making process and moving this forward at a very rapid pace without community input. So, that's my opinion. I know I don't live here any longer, I did live here for five years. We would like to move back to Aspen at some point. And, you know, one of the, one of the tactics that might help us do that is partially renting our place short-term. And I think that you also don't realize that that's destroying vibrancy of people. I have multiple clients that are looking in the 1.5 million range, that are young folks from other towns that want to have an, an impact here, they can work remotely now. And the only way they can afford to do that is if they short-term rent, and the people who come here and rent short-term also add vibrancy and economic benefits to this town. So, there.
Thank you, Chris.
Are we gonna start with two minutes or not? Because we have to put a timer on.
Sorry, thank you.
Otherwise, it's unfair to everybody else.
Second row.
Yep, come on up.
Thanks for letting us have a chance to speak.
We're trying.
My name's Kim Raymond, local architect, been in town for 40 years, and I totally agree with, with the last fellow just said about, um, the impact on the workforce. So many people will be so devastated by, it might not happen tomorrow, but it will happen, that when permits dry up, because we're waiting for six months and it takes so long to get permits, there are gonna be a lot of families, they've already suffered a lot from COVID and just from being shut down, so there's a lot of financial impacts that I would hope that you all could spend a little more time thinking about. And then kind of approaching this from a little bit of a different tact is, just I looked up some things in the Home Rural Charter for the city of Aspen today, and section 4.11, talking about emergency ordinances for the preservation of public property, health, peace, or safety, I think a question that a lot of people in the room have is, what's the emergency? I know the ordinance mentions the Aspen Area Community Plan of 2012. Well, that was a long time ago, and a lot of those things that are in there, we all would like to see a lot of those goals met, and the climate change things that are mentioned from the Chicago meetings that you've been at. I'm very much of a champion of all of those things and trying to design houses that are more energy efficient and all of those things, but rushing something through like this just makes all of us feel really uneasy. Um, one of the paragraphs in the ordinance, um, paragraph eight, number point one states, "To restore public confidence in the development process." Doing something like this so quickly does anything but restore confidence, because at this point, even in the future, people go, "Oh, maybe I better not do anything in Aspen, the city council could take, take my rights in a 24-hour period." So, this is something that's, this is a very deep thing that's going on here, it's really critical, so...
Thanks, Kim. Thanks, Kim.
Uh, just one other thing, um, if you guys could help us all understand the emergency part of this, the other part of section 4.11 says that "The facts showing such urgency shall be specifically stated in the ordinance itself." And I don't see any facts in the ordinance. I see a lot of opinions, a lot of goals, and all of things that should happen, but there's no studies, there's no ord, there's no rule, there's no empirical evidence. So, I would just ask that you would take a little more time before you attack these big problems, and I would be happy to help attack them if you need it.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Second row.
Okay.
Come on up, second row, second row. Over to Dwayne, Dwayne, come on up.
I request a recess if we continue the clapping.
Hi, Dwayne Romero, uh, citizen of Aspen, here with my wife and family. Appreciate your service as well, and in fact, I want to focus on that for a second. It, this, this action here this evening reminds me of the, kind of the trail of events and the, uh, the situation we did in 2007, where there was a four-to-one vote for an emergency ordinance for a, um, historical preservation ordinance across the entire city of Aspen, and it was a couple of years before we got back out of that. So, the takeaway for me from that series of events, I think, is applicable here tonight, and that is, there's a bit of faith and confidence in our council, in our leadership of our city to understand what you're hearing and also what you undoubtedly know, the resident impacts that this particular blunt force instrument that is an emergency ordinance. Clearly, you understand that, but at the same time, I feel like it's a fait accompli, I feel like it's already kind of a decision made. I hope tonight that there can be confidence and trust in your decision-making and some of your diligence. I've witnessed and worked with several of you. I have a great deal of confidence and hope that you will apply diligence and, and try to refine and sharpen the instrument. I kind of agree with Kim's comments that the, the case has not been completely made for an emergency. Now, there is an emergency, I suspect, and I would submit, there is an emergency for moving forward with development of the inventory that we do have. Torrey, remember back in council, we made an application, made a purchase of the, of the lumberyard, in fact, I think it was in between your, your terms, but the point of the matter is this, back then, we got our rear ends handed to us. Today, it's a, it's an asset and it has potential, it has, it has inventory potential. I would hope that that's where we could focus our energy, our resources, and our capabilities and restore some confidence. and restore some confidence in the townsfolk, that that's where we're focused upon this. And I'm not even focused on, on short-term rentals. I'm just talking about the development and the, and the, the actions that you're taking here in terms of this emergency ordinance in its entirety. I hope that that resonates. Again, I, I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Second row.
My name is Ed Foreign. I've been resident of Aspen since 1993. Raised my kids in the school here and, and, um, I want to thank you all for your service to the community and some very difficult decisions that you have to make. I would like to echo, um, and agree with everything that has been said so far by, by Bill Guth and Kim Raymond, Dwayne, Chris, um, and express my deep, deep concerns about how this can have a devastating effect on our community. I would, I'd like to appeal to you guys to just put things on hold for a minute. I would say create an advisory committee for both the short-term rentals and for the moratorium on redevelopment. So you have stakeholders involved in this community that care about this community, have the same concerns, champions of, of affordable housing. And also concerns about the environment, but there's also concerns about how this could impact the mental health of the community, which is already very fragile as it is. So, uh, thank you again for all your time. And, uh, again, please reconsider implementing this, this moratorium. I think it, I think it'd be potentially very devastating to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Second row. All the way over to the wall.
He's gonna go around.
Third row.
He's going around the rows. He'll get to you.
Um, I'm, I'm just going through in order by rows. Thank you.
My name is Bill Sterling. S-T-I-R-L-I-N-G. Question for, to begin with, Philip, are vacant lots included in this?
Mayor Torrey, would you like me to respond directly to?
Yes, please.
The, to the question. What would be the nature of the development on the vacant lot?
Well, there's no structure on it. That's what a vacant lot, not, not a, a tear down, which is what it seems that there's a lot of comments in the ordinance about that. But are vacant lots also included in the moratorium?
If there is no development order issued for development of that lot, then, and a development order would be required to develop the lot, then it would be subject to the moratorium.
So it's just considered the same along with all the demolition properties that already have houses?
If it doesn't have an entitlement on it?
Okay.
That's correct.
When I served the city in days gone by, back in the eighties, the council voted in a couple of moratoriums, moratoria. And the one I can remember the most vividly was one to preserve Victorians by putting a moratorium on the demolition permits for all Victorians. We were losing then a Victorian at the rate of about two a month back in the mid-eighties. Now that was an example for me of what I would call an emergency. Um, and out of that grew a lot of things, uh, that were related to historic preservation that have been, uh, codified and have made a lot, a lot of difference. We would have lost the whole historic character and history, uh, of, of, uh, of the town. I, I feel it's an abuse of the process by using an emergency ordinance to do a number of things that you're planning to do that I think are all worthy of consideration and discussion and many of them are going to be important for you all to implement. But I feel that it just locks the public out and, and I, I just think it, is it an emergency in the real sense of an emergency like I just described that happened before? In the, uh, comments from, from the, uh, community development office, I've read that the ongoing development of the residential real estate market has not delivered enough affordable housing for locals. This has been true since the 1980s, that the development of residential housing in Aspen, and we've done a lot of things with mitigation, uh, we've done a lot of things with, with the old concept of ADUs and some of those work better than others. But this is nothing new. It's not new news, uh, what you're launching into. So it, it, it appears to me that, uh, what you need to do is you need to address the actual rules and regulations. They have to be clarified, publicized and enforced. And we read about it now every day. Why hasn't that happened sooner? And it's great that it's beginning to happen, but it's those kinds of things that are going to increase the bedrooms. There's probably 25% of the 3,000 units that, uh, are not really being lived in appropriately according to the rules and regulations.
Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm, I need to ask you to summarize your comments.
Okay, thank you. Any rate, um, I just think it's an abusive process by using an emergent, uh, emergency ordinance in this case. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. We're still, yep, come on up.
How you doing? My name is Stephen May. I'm an owner of a, um, architectural design group in Glenwood. Um, I do not live in Aspen, but I've worked on many affordable housing projects in Aspen in the private sector and I love affordable housing. Um, I think that there's a lot of sunk costs and, um, financial, um, considerations that just haven't really been thought through. I mean, for me, potentially as of tomorrow, I lose 70% of my projects. I mean, actually, because they just can't do anything and they're for people who all want to live here. I mean, they've been.
Can I, a quick question? What is your job? What is your role?
I do architecture.
You do architecture?
Yep.
Um, so you would have stopped work, you would have stopped work from your clients because you can't put in permitting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they don't know what the code is going to be, so they can't continue the work during the process because it could be a complete waste of money. Additionally, two of my clients specifically have been working on their projects due to the vast nature of our code, which I actually appreciate because I love the character of our town. But it's not like something we can just draw and get ready and it's ready to go ne- next month. It's, it takes six months, eight months to get it all right, coordinated with structural, do the demo calc, go through all these calculations and everything and get it perfect per the code as it is. And it's like, we've put in seven of those months already on two, two of my projects. And all of a sudden it's like, oh, well, I'm glad you tried, but you know, that's just not going to work. Um, so I just really ask that you consider that there are more impacts than, you know, I don't know, just think about it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Same row, heading this way. Same row. Yep, come on up.
Thanks, Tori. My name is Alexandra George and I'd like to share a few comments having been here last night. So thank you guys for letting me back up here. Um, my concerns generally reflect what everyone else has had to say. And I'd like to just gener- generally poll the audience. How many of you have applied for a permit today, be it a short-term rental or?
That's not a public comment. I'm sorry.
Well, okay.
I mean, we've gotten all the letters. I said that we're hearing from people.
Rachel, I appreciate your comments.
We have a number, a total number as a matter of fact.
Okay, well, many of us have applied for permits today and it's gen- generally out of fear. It's out of fear as to what can happen within 12 hours of notice. 24, let's, let's be generous, 24 hours. And I think many of us are concerned. We applied because we don't know what's going to happen and we, thinking critically, are concerned that this is going to skew the numbers, that you're going to think all of us are out there, when instead what's happening is the just-in-case. I probably called alone 10 clients today who said, please apply for a permit, make it my Christmas gift, spend the $300 and do it, do it right. And so I just want to make, make that a, a, a point to be considered as well as I, I want to thank Mayor Torrey for allowing us to speak. I'm afraid that I have yet to hear anyone who's in favor of this moratorium and moving so quickly. If your minds are made up, that's one thing. But I really, really hope and encourage that you'll consider what we're here to speak about and how the impacts are so broad. So please consider this. And I understand last night was, I'm sure we were all caught off guard, but tonight a lot of us are here and I'm sure even more would be here if they could, if they, they could be. So thank you and, and please just take that into consideration.
Thanks, Alexandra. Going this direction? Yep, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Probably not the best speaker in the room publicly, so I hope my hair is looking good at least. First of all, thank you all for your service. I think you're all great. You all worked very hard to get a job that the rest of us couldn't do and would be afraid to do and wouldn't want to do, but you do a great job. I respect you all immensely and appreciate your time. I'm a 30-year Aspen local, almost a local. Been here 30 years, almost a local is how that works. But, um, I just wanted to echo, I mean, I could, I could tell my story. I am an apt graduate. Like it took me 10 years of working here. I moved here with a motorcycle and a duffel bag and someone else drove my dog up here for me. So there've been struggles for everyone who moved here for our own reasons, whether it was next gen or last gen or the gen before that or the gen before that. Granted, it's gotten worse and we're all here to participate in that. But what I'd like to say is there's only locals here in the room. So if you're here to represent the locals, these are the locals. And we're the ones showing up and it is still sort of off-season here. So we are your people, you represent us. I lived 17 years in the apt program and finally graduated, was able to turn my place over to another local. The reason I could do that was because I was able to buy a smaller condo and squeeze myself into that and offset the cost by STR. So you take that away, you're taking away also an exit strategy for people to free up, uh, affordable housing. Living here has always been hard. We all recognize there's a problem. We all want to help fix it. What the effects of this are just so intense and I'm so multifaceted that it's just kind of a, a rough thing for us all to grasp. I mean, basically we all helped all the brokerage community. I'm a broker with Christie's. So today, all the brokers helped at least 10 people get through the process today. So, you know, and you all stepped up at the city and put through a lot of permits that happened faster today than it's ever happened before. But we're all here to sit down at the table with you all and help you all work through this. We all agree we should do this right away, but this process is flawed. And I want to bring up the one thing that I think needs to be brought up that hasn't been brought up yet. And it's a council member who I respect and like very much, but the one who more than any other councilman pushed this through to the forefront and considered this an emergency is also someone who works in the vacation rental industry and has 15 properties under management in our valley currently and works for a national company that manages short-term rentals for absentee owners largely. So everyone in here, whether they are short-term rent or not, is afraid that their neighbor will get a short-term rental license and they will, um, their property will be worth a million more than the person next door who's a local and doesn't rent because they live there. That's not fair. And it's just, it's creating a lot of inequities and it just, it's a perceived issue that I think on its face should make you guys want to table this and give it some more time and work with us to solve it in a way that you're working with your community and this is your community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. A quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
So are you short-term renting your residence? Do you live in a condo or something and you short-term rent it now?
I have not short-term rented it yet, but I have a license which I avoided getting because I didn't license it. But, um, the city was sending me letters and I'm like, ah, I don't need to do that because I'm not renting it. So I had to get compliant, so I had to go through month after month after, or sorry, year after, or yeah, month after month and pay for each month and make it compliant. And then I got my short-term rental license under the wire, but I was helping people until seven o'clock tonight get theirs just so they won't be left out and have their neighbor's property be worth a million dollars more because they have a short-term rental license that's going to transfer to them. And then it's going from probably one investor to the next investor to the next investor. And the locals are getting screwed no matter how you look at this. That's my problem and that's what we all don't want. And we all want to collaborate together on fixing this.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Just, you know, we're, we're aware and have talked about that dynamic and, and it's top of mind as we work through this.
I know it is for you guys and I know that, um, yeah, I know that Mr. True also, um, agrees that this is okay, but I don't think it's been brought up in a meeting in a formal setting like it needs to be.
Yes, multiple times.
Not in the last couple of days.
For the record.
Oh, it was? I missed, I've.
For the record, could you state your name, please? Could you state your name, please, for the record?
Sorry, Joshua Landis.
Thank you so much.
I thought I did that, but. Oh, I did. Thank you all, thank you all for your time.
Next up, are we in the back row? Are we in the back row? All right, I'm coming back this way. Standing up in the back, standing up in the back. Come on up.
Yeah, I'm Bob Bowden. I have been here about almost 40 years. I think last month I have seen a number of moratoriums, like Bill said. I, uh, make three, I'm going to try to make three quick points. I've never done that in my life, so let's see if we can do it now. I think that a moratorium is maybe the most sacred authority we give you. It should be treated like a court injunction, which has an extremely high bar, right? The judges insist that something is truly, truly in danger. So when we were losing the historic houses as Mr. Sterling referenced, yeah, we were losing them and it was like, what happened to that? What happened to that, right? That was an emergency, guys. This doesn't rise to that, in my humble opinion. I think there's a lot of confusion. I would like, if I had my own business and had these problems in front of me, be able to call a timeout, but we can't. So we don't and we work really hard, really fast and we try to make the best decisions that we can. The cases where moratoriums have been misapplied, I've never seen them work. I don't think this one works. I'm asking you to just table it if you wish, get rid of it, you should, I think. And I know all four of you pretty well. I love this community. I raised four kids here. I mean, I have done so much, I've, you guys know me. I love this community. This is wrong for the community because down deep, I don't know that we all understand the impact, but you are going to cost hundreds and hundreds of people their jobs in the construction industry, which we saw evidenced by the COVID. Okay? Those people, I mean, it's going to be one month and they're out of work. If you remember COVID, I pleaded with those county commissioners, do not stop construction for these eight weeks. Nobody else in the state is, don't know what you know exactly, but don't, because the impact will be severe. 70% of all people across the country live paycheck to paycheck. That same 70% have less than one month's worth of earnings. Did you see the food lines that formed at the school because we donated money from the AEF to the Aspen Family Connections? Did any of you volunteer for that food handout? Lots, hundreds of people lining up two hours early to get food. Talk to Joey DeSalvo, talk to his other, the sheriffs in Garfield, Eagle County, the level of social services went up 300% during that week. Drunk and, drunk and disorderly, a, a domestic abuse. This is like so real. It's, and it's hundreds of people you're going to affect. If you so believe that putting those hundreds of people out of work truly is what's necessary to resolve, in fact, I'm not sure what rental has to do with, with stopping somebody from building. I don't get that. Confusion, but that isn't a, a moratorium. It doesn't call for that. But if you vote yes for a moratorium tonight, I would ask that you suspend your salaries from this city until you resolve it and the, and that moratorium is lifted. Feel the pain.
Thanks, Bob.
Because I had to take these people to my home and feed them in some cases. So this is emotional to me because I was dealing with hundreds of people. I would like for you to at least embrace that. If you, if you can't table it, please, as much as I love you, Rachel, I gotta tell you, I, you didn't want to feel the pressure. As much as I love you, Rachel, I got to tell you, you didn't want to feel the pressure of making a bad decision. How about the pressure of the people watching this at home, hoping they're not going to lose their jobs tonight? That's the pressure. Don't put them into that position, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Bob. All right, back row, we're still at the back row, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ryan Waltershead. I'm a partner and an architect for them. Actually emailed all of you guys last night, not knowing that you had just done this. I can understand maybe the emergent nature of trying to get a lot of people to submit permits in the next few months to beat and increase essentially in employee housing mitigation. I can understand the emergency that you are very short-staffed. And because you're very short-staffed here, it stretches the process out tremendously. I've lived in the community now for a time and have witnessed, I think, three of these moratoriums. In the past, they've all been focused mostly on commercial development. And this is the first one, to my knowledge, specifically is affecting residential homeowners, which are citizens in this community, whether they're here part-time or not. To Stephen's point, it takes a long time to get through this process. You have a number of brokers who sold property late summer, early fall, that we've been working with those buyers for months now. And they have sunk tremendous amounts of costs, not into just us as architects, but engineers, other members of the community who are engaged in this, this commercial activity. And I have three meetings tomorrow with people who I have not submitted a permit for yet, but I have been working with this staff for the last few months and have gone through design review or pre-application conferences. But none of that technically matters because I haven't either submitted a complete and it hasn't been deemed complete, also because your staff is short-staffed. And so we are under a tremendous amount of pressure. Me personally, tomorrow, having to tell a few clients who've spent upward, I mean, they've bought property worth millions of dollars and they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on fees to get something that now, as of tonight, I have no assurance of what you are going to change the residential land use code to affect. And so I don't know if you're going to change floor area requirements, height limit requirements. It's not just the employee housing mitigation. And so I don't know how to handle that tomorrow when I sit down with a client and tell them that, you know, I know we've been doing this for three or four months, but you're kind of out of luck because of the emergency nature that this council took. I would, I know that because it's emergency and having sat on the planning and zoning board for years, you guys have already made up your mind to a certain extent. I would really ask you to alter the wording of what you've already proposed so that the people who are already at least in the system and going through the process are not affected by this.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. In the back row.
Hello, again. Thank you, guys, all for your service. I know it's not an easy job. I want to start by talking about short-term rentals because I feel like that's where I'm an expert. You say you want to look at the numbers. You want to take a pause, you want to see the numbers. If you take a pause, you're going to create a false market. You're going to create a market where people rush to get permits. There were 1,200 in a year, now there's 180 in 24 hours. Then there's no one getting a permit for six months, maybe eight months, maybe 12 months, maybe three years, nobody knows. If you do it fast, it could be two months. If you can't figure it out because you're short-staffed, it's two years. And then again, when you reopen it up, we have a rush to get permits again. What kind of data is that that you're studying? It doesn't make sense. If you are confident in what you're about to pass or what you're thinking about passing, then you would have done it in front of the public with public comment and not within 24 hours. It wouldn't have been a surprise yesterday with, and I will say thank you so much for giving us public comment today because it was advertised as there was no public comment. So thank you for having public comment, but just know you advertised no public comment. So therefore, people who maybe thought they could have spoken didn't show up. I moved here in 2005. I've been a server. I've been a front desk girl at the Hyatt. I've been on NextGen. I've been a rental broker, a real estate broker and a past local. I now live in Basalt because I can't afford to live here either. But I still love this community. I feel like I'm a part of this community and this community keeps food on my table and my bills paid. I feel if you pass this emergency ordinance tonight, you'll lose my trust and I believe you'll lose all their trust too.
You guys, just respectfully, applause, please, hold them, hold them.
I think you'll toy with the, well, you toying with this will affect each and every single one of us sitting here tonight and so many more that you don't even know about. I am not against fair playing field. I am not against regulation. I just hope that you consider taking the time to make these really huge decisions that are going to affect a majority of the local community within a 24-hour period. Please, take a pause, not by taking a moratorium, not by passing a moratorium, but by truly thinking what's going to happen by the decisions that you make. A pause will not have no effect. All I know is that a pause will have unintended consequences that we haven't thought of in the last 24 hours.
Thanks, Ashley. In the back row, standing by the door, yep, come on up.
Hi, my name's Grant Purcell. I, I'm fortunate enough to live in a $400,000 trailer with APCHA and I love it. What I've heard since I've been here is a lot of experts. These people know what they're talking about. They're in the industry. They're the people to engage when issues come up that involve them. And that's not what happened. And that's unfortunate. I think we all expected more. And we would like to be engaged. We have information that can help. And it seems like this was something that was done under the cover of night, intended to be slipped through. I'll say that this industry has given me the best life that I could ever have. And I've done all the other jobs around here. This is where the middle class comes from. This is where the locals want to be in this. And this is how we can make enough money to live here. And you can cut it out and say, no, go work for somebody. It's disappointing.
Thank you, Grant.
Thanks, Grant.
Sure.
My name's Malia Nobrega and I'm the owner of 700 South Garmish that I bought a year ago and have spent tirelessly been going through this process. And it's been brutal, but we still have been very excited and we knew that it was a rough process and we know COVID is making it so much harder on everybody, all of you all, as well as the staff that's having to contend with all these applications with low, lower staff than everybody. I mean, the whole world seems to be contending with. So I do appreciate that. And we've been very excited and we've been very patient because we have known how hard it is right now. And we know you're dealing with a lot of growth pains and so much that you have to contend with. But we have now been through this process for a year. And we have a very complicated property with mine tailings and all sorts of issues that we've been going through. We already have done the mitigation because the parcel that we bought was part of the Barbie PUD and so there was already employee housing built. So we bought a property that already had employee mitigation in place for the parcel. And so we thought that we were safe and that we would be able to build and that even if it would take three years, we would eventually be, you know, have a property. And right now, we have no idea what's going to happen. So it's, it's a big deal.
And the process that you are in for building permit or you're in?
No, we've been, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to get through the process, but it's brutal. And it's, and we have been vigilantly going through the process from the beginning. Architectural, that takes forever. It's not an easy parcel and because it's on a PUD, it has some strange things with it that have made it way worse. So it's very hard to just build a compliant house because of some of the complexities of the law. But like, we're just, you know, we don't know where.
Thank you.
So think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw a couple, yep, come on in.
Hey, guys. My name's Alex Glenn. I'm going to keep this really short. I fully support this decision. I know it's a very difficult decision, but thank you for being willing to go in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Did I see somebody in this doorway, hand up over on this side? No? One more back there?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's George Clarence. I'm a builder and a broker, property manager. It affects me in every way and shape possible. I represent several clients that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on their projects and are about to submit and are now not able to. I'm very disturbed by the approach that you guys have taken on this entire process. I think you've tried to slip it through. There is no emergency, as has been spoken about and evidenced by previous speakers. I echo most of what previous speakers have already said. I'd like to add one last thing, which is you people are our representatives. You represent us, the community. We say no, so why are you moving forward? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Chris Bendon. It's been an interesting day, I think, for a lot of us. I have one comment and then I have some, probably more questions about how this is all going to work. I think my one comment is not necessarily about the substance, but about the impact. And I hope you all fear the, feel the, sort of the severe and real impact on folks, like a lot of people in the room, probably. Spent the day on the phone with a lot of folks that are trying to figure out what's going on and what it means to them. Folks that are looking at properties or working on properties, you know, architects, contractors, purchasers, et cetera. Those impacts to those folks are real and they're sort of disproportionate. So I hope you just all understand that and appreciate that. I have some questions, sort of based on what I do, on how this is all going to work. Three of them. The first is regarding projects that already have a development order. They've already gone through their land use review, already in for building permit. If they want to make a change to that project that triggers a land use review, even just an administrative review, can they do that? And to put a finer point on it, I have a client who has a house that was approved under prior ownership. It's not their design. Went through all the approvals, got in for building permit. The building permit they can execute on. They want to change the design. And what they want to change will make the building lower. They want to take the second floor off of the building and put those bedrooms in the basement, essentially. So, but I don't know if they're caught or if they're not caught. And so between the drafters of the ordinance and the adopters of the ordinance, I'm trying to get an answer to that so I can advise them. My own personal feeling is that it's not what you intend to capture. So that's, that's the first one. The second is regarding residential development, single-family duplex development that is a mix of affordable and free market. Not large-scale multifamily development, but literally a duplex of free market and a duplex of affordable on the same property, one mitigating for the other. If that can be exempted, or if it is exempted in this language, I can't tell. My third and last is the ordinance is drafted to apply to residential development. And it then goes on to say that a standalone commercial development or a standalone lodging development is exempt. And I don't know what the importance of stating that is, if it's only applicable to residential in the first place. And also don't know what standalone means. So for example, can a lodge, because many of the lodges have affordable housing sort of buried in them, does, is that a standalone lodge or is it a mixed residential and lodging development? So can a lodge that has affordable housing in it still apply for a land use review and move forward? Or are they captured in this? A lodge that has affordable and also free market residential in it, are they captured or can they submit a land use application and move forward? That may be more of a clarification, but between, again, between the adopters here tonight and the drafters that are, that are sitting here, I'm trying to get some clarity around that. And I think you would, you should have that clarity to provide to the public when you adopt this. Appreciate you taking comments tonight.
Thank you.
Philip, do you have quick answers on those three questions?
I would, I would suggest that we not try to evaluate individual scenarios because that could be never-ending. We're happy to discuss this and could have discussed this with Mr. Bendon during the day to see if there were clarifications that could be made. But it is extremely difficult to try to look at individual scenarios that he is proposing here without knowing a whole bunch of additional facts.
Yeah.
The language that we've drafted speaks for itself. We believe it's appropriate. And, excuse me, I think that it's just difficult to try to have that kind of dialogue here that I have.
I would respond by saying, not to present more argument, I would respond by requesting that we get that level of clarity as soon as reasonably possible. We have folks that are looking at investing substantial sums of money into this community that are in complete freak-out mode. They don't know what to do. And as soon as the city can provide answers as to the meaning of this ordinance and the applicability, the better. So I would request that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Comment, please, meritorious, to Chris specifically. Given your professional experience in the community, I think you are well aware of the number of variables and hypotheticals that our staff are subject to just in the last 24 hours. Given your professional history in the community, you know how to get in touch with our staff. And we were available all day to answer specific questions just like that and we're providing that level of service to all of our customers on an as-needed basis and not subjecting council and the public to that level of detailed discussion. So you know where to find us and we're available to help you.
Yeah, there's, there's an email to you about three hours ago.
Which is 5 o'clock. That would have been 5 o'clock.
All right, last call for in-room. Last call for in-room, come on up.
Hi, everybody. My name's Michael Edinger. Thank you so much for letting me speak and for spending the time here. I've heard a lot about like the emergent nature of this issue and it kind of came on very suddenly. and it kind of came on very suddenly as everybody is feeling. And I assume that that means that there's no time to study this and so we need to halt everything right now. That means that there's probably no funds in the community development office to hire new staff to take this on or to hire out a consultant. I'm not sure how the city runs their organizations and their different systems, but it seems to me that if we have resources already in place that could be applied to bring people on to do this concurrently while we continue on our existing process, that seems to be more applicable and more practical than just halting, you know, all work, especially if there's resources that we can actively apply and work together while we continue to kind of drive everything forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Lex Terumions. Thank you all for being here. And I think the, the comments I've been, I've heard since I've been here have been spot on. I just want to, you know, sitting here, I'm, I'm thinking about 2012 and the down zone of the commercial core and the unintended consequences that we saw from that. You know, I don't think that that action made our downtown core any more vibrant. It accelerated penthouse applications. And it has not really done what was hoped with the, to support the fabric of our downtown and our community. So I'd ask you to really tap the brakes here. I think we need to look at our land use code in its entirety, how it serves our community and how it will serve the goals of council and our community. Because it's, it's highly complicated. There are a lot of, as we've heard tonight, there are a lot of people's livelihoods that are at risk. And I, I just don't see the value in an emergency moratorium such as this helping us get through the issues that we're faced with today. There's no doubt that, you know, when you look at 2012, we have more high end retail here, more high end restaurants here. All of these things that putting constraints on the land use code in the commercial core did not help. And I don't think we're going to see, I'm, I'm confident we're not going to see the right results from this immediate action. So I, I urge you to step back, get some of the community, get the community involved and let's understand what the real problems are and how we can solve them with more thoughtful and thought out code changes. Thank you.
Thanks, Lex.
Thank you.
All right. Last one.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Fulton. I'm going to tag on Lex with the thoughtfulness of it. I think that we all agree that housing is an issue in this town. I'm raising two daughters. I live in employee housing. I've worked every job under the radar. And I think that ultimately it all comes down to housing's a crisis. Not only for a free market, but also employees. And I don't think that taking a gigantic segment of our economy is going to help the big picture. Ultimately, I think not being able to gain equity in employee housing is really constricting on those living in employee housing. I've gained about $16,000 in equity in the last eight years in my house. How am I supposed to ride this free market stair step at that rate? It's nearly impossible. So I just encourage us to think about other alternatives and not necessarily think about alternatives that can take jobs away. I do a lot of rentals in town. It provides a lot of jobs from housekeepers to maintenance guys to window washers to, who knows, personal concierges. It's, there's a lot of jobs that are supported by this. And same with construction. I mean, think of all the trades that you have to bring in to build a house. It's tremendous. And to try to take a stab at the two biggest employing options as, as a way to fix our employee housing affordability is, is, I, I just think we need to rethink it and really consider other ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'm going to look on Web X. We'll go ahead and open up for some Web X comment. Yes, ending in 13, go right ahead. Phone number ending in 13, go right ahead.
This is Kathy Fonder. My phone number ends 9913. I was not able to log on to Web X as there was no password provided to me. I'm just calling in on the telephone. I'm an owner at Fashing House. I have a one bedroom condo there. I have a two bedroom condo at the Durant across the street. I purchased my condo at Fashing House with the full intent of using it in the winters. And I, I, I have other place, I'm retired. I have other places to live the rest of the year. I like being asked in the winter and only in the winter. If I had, had any influence, then I wouldn't be able to do rental in my property. I never would have bought it. And same with the other property across the street. I am only there three months of the year. So how does the city benefit when my unit is empty for nine months of the year, when both of my units now would be empty under this moratorium if I'm not issued, you know, a special permit? I, I have had a permit for, ever since I've owned it. I've paid the taxes every quarter. I, I think that this emergency action serves the community very well in that probably a hundred different owners, as we've heard today, 180 different owners today, applied for permits. Those are people who are probably under the radar and weren't playing by the rules. But I think it's unfair to punish people who have played by the rules all along, who bought their property through the expectation of being able to rent them and to, you know, to throw this whole thing into jeopardy. If one of my units, I have two units and, and one of them, I, you know, I've thought about selling it. There's a condition that, you know, not important to the community that might lend itself for me to sell my unit. And, and an action like this would motivate me to do that. And an action like this can also cause a degradation in the valuation that I would be able to sell it for. And I don't think that's fair to have alternative events happen like that in 24 hours with no way to prepare. My comment.
Thank you so much, Kathy. Kathy, you, you currently have a short term rental permitting for your units?
So, so my question is, when I apply to the city and I pay my quarterly taxes, the permit that I get is a vacation rental permit. Is, are you calling that the same thing as a short term rental? Because
Yes.
You know, nowhere is defined in what I have.
Yes, yes.
It's called a short term rental. So I don't, I, I think you might have a, you know, a, a little bit of a typo there that can cause some problems.
Yes, Kathy.
Whatever you might.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, so do you have your vacation rental permit for your properties?
I do.
Then you are able to continue to rent your properties.
Just get 22 business licenses.
Until September of next year. But, you know.
No, 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 not, not, no, no, no. It's not just until September of next year. No, that is not a definite. We are not taking away your vacation rental permit starting September next year. That is not the case.
I don't understand.
Yes. We are extending your 2021 permits and we will be having discussion about any regulations going forward. But we, you are not losing your permit in September by the virtue of actions tonight.
What, so I, I, I guess I, you know, I, I have not been privy to, no one sent me an email or anything letting me know what's going on. It's only because I subscribe to the Aspen Daily News that I got wind of this. So actually know what your goals are here? Or, you know, what, I, I really, I, and I, and I feel like that's just, you know, a big hole right now.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for your call. I'm sorry that you have confusion about this, but you have your permitting and you are fine to continue your rentals. Thank you. I'm going to open up for others on Web X. I have a number ending in 64. 303 ending in 64, go right ahead.
Hello, this is Emily Kelly. My number ends in 1064.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Emily.
Hi, I've owned a property for over 24 years, a two bedroom, right near the St. Louis. My mom bought it in the nineties. My husband grew up in Denver and he, his family left his places in the sixties and seventies. My children are fifth generation Colorado. And our ability to rent to our guests, family and friends is an affordable way for people to enjoy Aspen. We've rented to athletes at the X Games, people enjoying the music festival, the design festival, people working the food and wine, Ruger Fest, people from Douglas County, Aurora, Durango, Fort Collins. And if you eliminate short term rentals, all you have left is really expensive hotel rooms. You know, this is how people can come up and enjoy beautiful Aspen, fly fashion, skiing. And they might not be high end retail buyers or restaurants. They might just be going to city market and cooking meals, but we love it up there. So please don't take this away from us.
Thank you, Emily. I think I can speak for this council. There's no intent to eliminate short term rentals in Aspen. Thank you, Emily. Other comments on Web X? I'm looking for anybody that's unmuted on Web X. I have a Katie. Katie, are you there?
I'm going to move on to Dennis Moon.
Hello, it's actually Laura Boone. I want to echo what Joshua Landis and Kim Raines both said. And I want to thank you all for at least taking some time and consideration because I'm sure it's been a couple of long nights for you. I have my best card with the city and especially since COVID, workers have been increasingly hard to find. I'm sure you know that because you guys were running the lean shift yourselves. I just, I, I do have a question about where the data is coming from. This seems kind of like a little bit of a knee jerk reaction and we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater without thinking about the, the near term effects of that. And so I, I think it's really going to put a short term pinch on so many people locally that again, I highly, highly, highly encourage you to table this. I think it's purposely great to collect sales taxes and revenue and permitting. I think that's fantastic. And we all need to regulate that with the safety of everybody, workers, tourists and all. But this seems a little bit of, I, I, as we go in the said, this truly is not emergency. I agree, we need to get to employee housing.
Thank you, Laura. John Ward, go right ahead.
Thanks, Torrey. Hey, I just finished a meeting with, with Skippy and Rachel on the ATR board meeting. Ultimately, the, the way to solve the, the housing crisis isn't through a moratorium to stop construction, isn't through a moratorium to stop short term rentals. Short term rentals in construction is a livelihood in Aspen. I think I moved here 20 years ago. In fact, May 15th of 2000 is when we crossed the bridge, moved in with my inlog. And, and the big construct, the big discussion at that point was finding enough beds for, 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 for vacationers to come stay in. Now, limiting these short term rentals is ridiculous. You had, you had Dwayne Romero, Bob Bowden, Chris Bendon, three people I respect immensely, their knowledge, their ability to work, the system to understand what's going on in our market. And to, to shut down construction and to stop that completely for six months, you don't understand the impact you have on the engine of this entire town, the, the employment base. Aspen is the engine that drives the bus from here to rifle. And construction stops, planning stops, people go out of work. I, I did multi million dollars in my branch and my team in PPP loans. We shut down construction when the, when the country shut down for, for COVID. There's not that support system here. And what you're going to do is put a bunch of people in unemployment. You're going to exacerbate the, the employment crunch we have today. So reconsider what you're doing and think about the impacts of just this single one decision. Thank you.
John, I, I thank you very much. I do want to be clear. Some of the language that you used there, this is not a total shutdown on construction. This is not a ban on short term rentals. I, I understand the, what you mean and the nuance there, but I just want to be clear, the language that we're using. Thank you. Other members on Web X? I'm looking down the list.
Do you see that lady with the hand?
I do not.
I don't know who it is.
Elizabeth Selber.
Elizabeth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, again. To reintroduce myself from last night. My name is Elizabeth Selber and I'm an accounting professional within the vacation rental industry with over 25 years' experience. I want to also reiterate a point that was mentioned last night, and that was regarding a desire of town council to go ahead and consider community preservation. And that is why you went ahead to push this emergency ordinance locally. I think your community right there has spoken to you tonight. And in fact, 600 petitioners signing petitions just within a few short hours. It's quite impactful on your constituency. That being said, I would also like to point out that based upon the statistics that you began the meeting with, I actively manage 35.7% of the short term rental permits in the city of Aspen right now. And while the planning commission and the city of finance stated that they did their due diligence by having commu-, open community consideration and impact, I was never contacted, but I've been the finance department's weekly wheel for two plus years now. That being said, to reiterate, the law and intended consequences to your community have been spoken there. In our neighboring community there in Summit County, I know other industries and other businesses who have been vastly impacted from artists who do wedding photography, for instance, or family photography, all the way down to housekeepers, maintenance, all that sort of thing. So instead of going ahead and putting a moratorium here without proper due diligence, proper due diligence and community consideration needs to be taken before this step is finished. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is there's no arm for compliance here. You're going to go ahead and put a moratorium in here, but the rental market is still going to happen. And so absence of a compliance, major or compliance enforced, there's really nothing that's going to happen. All you're going to do is you're going to shift the vacation rental market outside of the city limit, which is also going to shift your tax dollars away from the city of Aspen, which will also negatively impact any revenue that you have for potential affordable housing. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right. We have just a few more here. Members on Web X? Public comment from Web X?
I can comment.
Go right ahead.
I just want to say that I really support what you're doing. I really respect everyone in the city of Aspen. It's a really difficult decision. While they're necessary to take the time that you need to assess the terms and the balance there of the community and the citizens of Aspen.
Thank you. Thank you. Another call for members of the public on Web X?
Someone that supports.
Yes, go, state your name again, please.
Hi, this is Cindy Huben and I'm a citizen of Aspen and I'd like to thank the council for bringing this forward and considering this moratorium because I really feared that you have taken the time through the past year to bring up information that led you to the conclusion that this was necessary given the sustainability of the community. And I'd also like to point out that anytime this type of action has been taken by this community, that the community has just benefited from it. It has become more and more of a community that is sustainable, a community that is desirable by people not only locally but by the outside. And I think that all of that serves the community well. And I appreciate the council taking this action and taking the time. And I understand. And I understand that while the majority of the people who have spoken today are directly impacted through the real estate community and through the development community, I understand the concern. However, I think that the concerns of the general public who live here should really be taken into consideration. And for me, as a person who lives here and who has strong vested interest in this community, I feel that you're taking the time to consider this over the next six months, the past six nights, and that you will only benefit all of the community in the long run. When I hear people talk about the long-term impact, that's what we're talking about. Please, take a look at this because of the long-term impact. And please, take a look at the fact that so many people have spoken tonight have actually moved out of the community because of the unaffordability. And that is part of why you, I believe, have expressed through the recitals to begin your potential passing of the moratorium, that you wanted to get a grip on the affordability of this community. And I totally got the confidence in the city council to move forward on these considerations because you have been educating yourself throughout the year on all of the issues. If people have been paying attention, you've been paying attention to the cost of the community relative to our services.
I'm keeping track of it. I'm writing down start times and I know when people are finishing. Thank you.
Okay, do I need to?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Other Web X? We have a few more Web X? Mike?
Hey, Mike.
Hello, April here.
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much for taking the public comment tonight. Very disappointing that it was, you know, published in the papers that there was going to be no public comment. I'm just very happy to see that that was incorrect. In any event, there's an awful lot I can say. Certainly, I'm probably disappointed in the city for what I appear to be in the piece of power. As with many moratoriums, it's been past moratoriums of no way met any reasonable standard for an emergency and a risk to, you know, the safety of the community. And I just think that that's kind of terrible if you support. There are supposed to be facts that support this action. And I see absolutely zero facts in your ordinance. I see suggestions and perceptions, but no facts. So certainly, I would encourage members of the community that have the resources to challenge this motion. Setting all those issues aside and the many, many concerns that other people have discussed, you know, perhaps one of my biggest concerns is you, the city has not been able to process applications and community input because of lack of staff as well as volume for months and months and months and months, if not years. Where are you going to find the staff or the third-party professionals to do this work? You know, there is a crisis of available resources. And you're not gonna find the resources to get this done in six months or nine months or what have you. So this is gonna go on and on and on. You know, I was a big part of the 2007 historic preservation moratorium and the outcome of that. That was more than 18 months before we got to the end of it. And that was a much simpler problem to be analyzed and refused in this one. So you are gonna get it done and you are devastating the community and the value of our home.
Thanks for your comments, Mike. Other members on Web X? I've got a Mark Luca, are you there?
Yes, actually, I'm his wife, Marissa Lucas, who's in this phone. So we love Aspen and we were planning on becoming owners of a short-term rental there that was perfect. We love it, we have got friends there that live there and we visit often, especially in the winter time. This is going to devastate us. We have a closing that's happening in a couple of days without even eight hours notice. We had to apply for a license that we don't even know if it's actually being approved as a permit. There's a lot of financial funds that we've put into this to escrow and to to invest in that and we're going to be losing all that. That's for a lot of the people that have petitioned against it. Keep in mind, all the people that we were going to hire to take care of this property, they're going to also lose their jobs. All the people that were going to come and visit and rent it, they're not gonna come anymore or they can do long-term rentals and they're not gonna come anymore. All the people that are working there to make a living in this apartment that we're going to buy isn't going to make more reasonable availability for folks to live there for less. These are expensive properties and people can't afford to rent them for less. It's impossible. It's still gonna happen. And I urge that the city council makes a different decision on this and allows time. I came from a different country that had horrible values of use of power and communism. And they may change overnight. This smells just like that for abuse of power and intent of funds and monetary value that maybe the council is making, and I don't have any basis on that, but it smells to me just like that. And I hope that's on the agenda.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Luca. Last call for Web X comments this evening.
Hi, yes, my name is Kate May.
Go ahead, Kate.
Hi, I'm gonna keep my comments quick as well. I just want to speak to one email that I received already from the city of Aspen prior to this meeting, basically stating that the moratorium is already in place. And my only question to you guys is, does our opinion matter to you?
It does, that's why we're taking public comment.
Question, why is the city already claiming the moratorium is in place?
I don't know what email you are referring to.
Be happy to share that email with you.
All right, feel free to send it over to me. That's tori@cityofaspen.com. Thank you, Kate. One more call, Web X comments?
I see one. Sarah Broughton.
Okay. Sarah, go ahead.
You're on mute, Sarah, mute.
I also want to thank the council for bringing this up and considering the long-term impact on the working-class people that live and work in this community and how short-term rentals affected the availability of actually affordable housing for people who are in the working class in this community outside of vacation rentals in terms of restaurant workers and people who need to be able to afford decent living and apartments that have now gone solely to short-term rentals.
What's your name? Can you give us your name for the record, please?
Already gone.
Already lost him. Not Sarah, I guess.
I know that wasn't Sarah talking.
Sarah, are you there? Yep, if you could speak up a little bit or speak into your microphone, go right ahead.
Increase the volume.
A little bit.
Increase your volume.
Pump up the bass.
No, but.
Not really.
Just go ahead.
Listen closely.
Can you hear me? Sorry, guys.
Go right ahead, yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so I've been listening, I've had a call in and I finally was able to get him to look back. So I feel needed comments, thank you, guys. We have complex issues going on and I just am volunteering to lean in on these issues. I think Bob Bowden said something that really resonated with me. The world doesn't stop when we deal with complex issues. And we need to lean in together, we need to listen to each other, we need to practice. We're all intelligent people, we care deeply about these communities that we live in. We've lived in thousands and thousands of years of experience in this town tonight. And so I think that there's a good opportunity to get ahead of unintended consequences. In the 21 years that I've been in Aspen, I see time and time again, well-intentioned policies that go into effect that have the exact opposite outcome of what we're trying to do. And therefore, it's just continued to get more and more expensive every turn. And so every time we put any stop on anything, what it does is this continues to raise the gap in terms of what we're trying to do. So I understand that the issue's at hand and they are all very important for our sustainability. But it's not sustained for the thing that we can just stop progress and change. Let's instead roll up our sleeves, get together, and figure out what we can collectively do in order to affect the future of our communities. It's not by stopping.
Thank you, Sarah. Another comment on Web X? Phone number ending in 53?
Hey, Tori, I'm busy, Billy, I'm calling. I just wanted to call in. I'm not in agreement with this at all. I've been a long-term Aspen resident since 95, but if I were to purchase the place in 2001, I've never rented it since I lived there. I did file or tried to send in today one of those permits to get that done just in case I do want to rent it. Because at some point, I want to stop working and it would be nice to get some rental income to pay for that place. And I've also got parents that I'm dealing with that I'm gonna need to be supporting. I don't really agree and I don't understand why we're doing this. I don't think that anybody that I have, or anybody that is buying a condo these days and spending the millions of dollars that they're spending are gonna rent it if they're wanting to use their unit. What we're seeing is fewer and fewer people that are actually wanting to rent it because they don't have to. And then on the flip side, when they're paying that much to rent it, I mean, that much to purchase it, they're not looking to rent it at a very low price for employee housing. So I'm not quite sure what we, what this, you know, what we're trying to do. I'm in real estate, I do do rentals, and we're just seeing less and less owners renting their properties. And we're seeing on a constant basis, real estate agents in search of. And I think when you go on and you're looking at Airbnb and you're looking at VRBO, those sites are unrealistic. They're all listed by real estate agents. They are absolutely never right on what property is available at what, you know, at what time. Most people don't even use those sites. There are two homes that I actually have sold in the last two years, those homes are still on VRBO because I do not know how to get them off of it. I just think that this is a moratorium, I think I'll need to think about it more. I think we need to focus on another way of getting employee, more employee housing than taking away someone's rights. If in fact, I need money this year for my parents and I don't get my permit done, can I not be able to rent my place to pay for some of their medical bills? There's a lot of us out there that have mortgages. And I just think that this is not the way around it, or not the way to go about it by punishing people. And I, you know, I don't think that the other lady that got on the phone that was saying a lot of people that signed up today, 150 of them, were probably people that, you know, just didn't, that haven't been paying taxes. I think it's more people just, you know, thinking that they are not gonna be able to rent their properties next year unless they get in under the wire and did in today. And that's why so many of them signed up, whether or not they're gonna rent them at all. And one more thing I want to say, because someone does a permit and rents their house, there's like mine, I may rent it for a week if I ever do. I'm never gonna be renting it tons throughout the year because I live there and I think there's a lot of people that may rent it one or two times and they're not renting it, you know, constantly throughout the year. One more thing I want to say, a two-bedroom condo, you can rent that out for $500 a night, five to seven, you can't even get into, you know, any of those hotels for that in a two-bedroom. So I think we are helping the people that aren't the Walmarts out there that can't afford to rent, to spend the money for a one-bedroom in a hotel of $1,500 and $1,800 plus. So anyway, that's it. Appreciate all your help, y'all do.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have her on my screen. Heather Hewitt.
Go right ahead.
Heather Hewitt.
Heather?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I'm personally as a listener, but I'll just tell you what the history of my property is. My parents bought this condo, it's a two-bedroom condo, and it's in Constance, it's six hundred. They bought it in 88. They're from Hawaii and it was sort of a retirement residence with themselves. And when they first bought it, they didn't rent it at all. We used to come up here and ski mostly over the winter and come up during the summer. And then my husband and I actually bought a place in Whistler because the condo got kind of small after we got we come here. The ground, where it starts. My dad had been long-term renting the condo because my mom passed away and he doesn't really ski anymore. So I would like to have that option of being able to do occasional short-term rentals to help pay for the condo, obviously, when my dad passes away. Because, you know, I do live in Hawaii, so I'm not gonna be coming up here all the time, but, you know, a few months at a time.
Heather, do you currently have your vacation rental permit, Heather?
Sorry?
Do you currently have a vacation rental permit for your unit?
No, I'm staying in my dad's condo right now. And he's never used it as a short-term rental. He's only been longer-term rentals. But I would like to have the option of a short term because then I can use it, you know, I could rent it for a short period of time and then come up and take care of myself. If there's no question then for short term.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Heather. Heather, you're breaking up a little bit. I just wanted to say that we are not discontinuing short-term rental or vacation rental availability. There are 1,400 permits that are active in the city of Aspen. In order to do short-term renting, you do need a permit. So I would hope that you got one or you plan to have one. So that, we are not taking away your ability, you have the ability. If you're here in Aspen, you have the ability to get your permit.
Okay, well, yeah, I did go online today and try to fill it out and honestly, I don't know what happened. It says pending, so.
Okay, then you are, then if you got a pending message, you are in the queue. Heather, congratulations, good job. Good job. Thank you for, thank you for your comments tonight.
Okay, and can you see this lady?
Katie Fresh?
Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank all of you who have been on the other side of a table like this and for extended hours of comments. So thank you for sticking through it. I know it's tough, so I appreciate that. I've been listening to this whole thing, I was not listening last night, but a couple things struck me. First off, we haven't, as a public this evening, heard from council as to why each of you believes that this emergency moratorium solves a problem and what problem it solves that is an emergency. And so I think some of the confusion that I've heard from different people tonight, different opinions of what you're trying to do, is based on what I think is really a flawed process. I think this is something that should be a public process and that's what you guys were elected to do. And I don't see the public part of it. I see an emergency ordinance with no explanation, other than last night, which people are just trying to make up to understand what happened last night from a couple of articles. trying to make up to understand what happened last night from a couple of articles from the press, which, you know, might not cover 100% of what your intentions are. So I think publicly, it's stripped from each of you individually on what problem you think you're trying to solve. I think you've heard from everyone on how they think that whatever problem they hear that you're trying to solve is not actually going to help. But we need to hear from you on what that's going to solve. And secondly, I'd just like to say that I do think that it's a flawed public process. I have not heard anything that implies that this is an emergency. And I think as elected officials, I think it's very important to listen to people. I appreciate you listening to people, but you also have to maybe pause on making decisions when you haven't had enough time for the input and feedback. So I would encourage you to do that. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Katie. One more lady? I don't recognize her.
Monica somebody.
Hi, this is Monica Colombo. I own at the Duran's.
Hi, Monica.
I bought, hi. Um, you know, I wanted to say, look, I think employee housing incredibly is important. I've been coming to Aspen since 95. I bought in 2011. I convinced some friends to buy in 2011, '12. We're also on the phone. And, um, I just wanted to say, you know, many of the houses, I know that you said you're not impacting short-term rentals, but when you place a moratorium on permits, it means you're thinking about it. And so that adds a lot of confusion as to what could happen, and it's natural for homeowners to think permits could be limited, made up to lottery. It creates, it creates a lot of confusion in the market. So as you're thinking about it, I just wanted you to take into consideration and maybe look at the numbers of the average value of the homes that have those 1,400 permits, and think of their operating. I mean, most of the operating costs are minimum between taxes next pay of $25,000 a year. And then if the person owns the home cash, which many do, think of if it interests, that would be another $60,000 a year. So if you just took their alternate investment, what they could earn on their, on their cash home, plus the operating cost, you're at $85,000 a year, just to break even with treasuries. That's not rent that locals can pay. So just think about the numbers before you think you're going to convert 1,400 rental properties into, you know, into employee housing. It will not happen. The people who have to rent their homes because they have a mortgage on it and have to cover the mortgage and cover the other costs, they're not renting it for 2,000 months. What you're forcing them to do is sell their home. And to sell it, because there won't be any permits left, because new people can't get permits, they'll sell it to people who use the home two months a year, and then it'll be empty 10 months a year. And empty homes do not shop in restaurants or go on the peat mountain, buy clothes or support the local economy. And then, you know, people who are more fortunate, who, you know, I don't have to rent my home. If I lose my permit, I'm going to, I'm going to use my home two to three months a year, and it's going to be empty. So just wanted to say, think of the numbers. Think of what a mortgage is on a property like that, and what someone has to cover. And does that really create employee housing? And then when you put a moratorium, it creates a lot of uncertainty, creates questions, creates that rush of permits that you saw today. There are impacts to moratoriums.
Thank you, Monica. I have unmuted Jason Fishburne. Jason, do you care to comment this evening? Hello? Go ahead, Jason.
Real loud.
All right, last, yes, go right ahead.
Okay, um, yes, I actually did not realize I was in the queue for this, but...
Welcome.
Well, I'm sure how I got there. But, um, you know, I would reiterate a lot of things that were said tonight, and, you know, at the end of the day, I just feel like this is a very rushed process. And, you know, we've been on the, on the phone with homeowners today as well, um, you know, people that have both lived here and may not be here anymore, but also, um, you know, a lot of people depend on this income. So it's, um, I'm much on the same level as everybody else. There's a lot of unintended consequences, and rushing this moratorium through, I don't think is the right process for this, you know? So, um, I think everybody needs to take a step back and think about this before, you know, we want to do a moratorium, let's, let's give it another 30 days or, or at least in order to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks. All right. I'm going to, uh, discontinue public comments, seeing no others.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may add to the record, I received a letter today from Ken Centron of Klein Cote Edwards and Centron LLC. He asked that I put his letter into the record as an objection to the adoption of ordinance number 27. So I am providing this to the clerk, and it will be part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would like to make public comment.
You know what? I was saving the best for last, Chris. Why don't you go?
What's up, Chris?
Thank you, Tori. My name's Chris Bryan. I'm an attorney in Aspen, where I practice law here since 2004. Um, I really think that this is rushed. The city's swinging a sledgehammer when it should be using a scalpel and should be liberative and not impulsive. And that's sure what it feels like. I think you called everybody by surprise with this when you circulated the emergency ordinance last night. This isn't an emergency, everyone. An emergency is a serious, sudden, and unforeseen, and dangerous event that requires immediate action. This is a central problem that requires careful study. This requires time and a large swath of public input. Former Mayor Bill Sterling was spot on. Don't be the boy who cried wolf. Don't call it an emergency when it's not. Bob Bluth was right, too. This is an extraordinary measure that should be used in the only most dire of circumstances. It should be used when there's irreparable harm and no other alternative. And when someone is smart and is talented as Chris Fenden, the city's former community development department director thinks that the language of your ordinance is confusing and that its effects are not well thought through, we should all take pause. Senator Brown nailed it on the head, too. This type of regulation perversely harms the people you say you want to protect and support. The middle class suffers, the workforce will be harmed, billionaires aren't going to notice. They won't be impacted. The hotels are owned by multinational corporations and private equity, they're going to benefit. There's no community support for this. We've heard, what, 100 people opposed this and three came out to speak in favor of it? And even those three, not one could explain why it's a good idea or why it's even necessary.
Let's take their name.
We heard, we heard none of that. Where's your constituency here? If this is such an emergency that has public support, why didn't they show up tonight to speak? The unintended consequences that will cause more harm than good, and the economic impacts are vicious. And I'm scared that you guys haven't even thought that through. The news of this emergency ordinance made my phone ring off the hook at my law firm today. I spoke to over a dozen people who are seriously concerned about their livelihoods or about their ability to maintain the houses or the properties they have. Many of them are contemplating legal action. Make no mistake, council, a moratorium is going to cause many people to lose their jobs and livelihoods. It's going to cause a panic. It'll cause harm that you haven't even contemplated. But I will guarantee you this, it will be lucrative for lawyers.
Thanks, Chris.
Lawyers.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
More resources from the city. Guys, vote this down. It's a bad idea, and I think you know that.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. All right. All right. Thank you, guys, all for your patience this evening and allowing others to speak. I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. I'm going to bring it back to council table. Uh, council members, I want to start with any comments that you have. We heard a lot from different people. Do you have any questions? Do you have any comments at this time? I'll start down at the end. John?
I just want to say real quick that I've heard the word abrupt and sudden used quite a bit tonight. And, uh, Michael Miracle from the Ski Company showed me an article from the July 11, 2017 issue of Outside Magazine titled, "Did Airbnb Killed the Mountain Town?" Most of us serve on this, this board, and we attend these conferences called Colorado Association of Ski Towns. This STR Airbnb VRBO issue is universally affecting mountain towns across the West, resort towns across the nation. This is not a sudden problem. Most, this council, before I got on board, allowed people to apply for permits almost a year ago. So I do not see this as a sudden occurrence or an abrupt occurrence. We've got some serious problems here in our town. Our community has spoken to us about the issues of overdevelopment, and we are responding to those constituents as well. We understand your concerns, and this was not, uh, we all deliberated over this for months to try and see if, if it was necessary or not, and we came to the conclusion that it was. So, thank you for coming here to speak tonight, but I disagree that this has been brought upon suddenly.
Thanks, John. Yeah.
Thank you. Rachel?
I don't care what he said, so... I'll try to speak loudly. I, I realize it's a challenge for all of us with the mask on, and I'm not sure. I have a lot of notes from 100 speakers, so I'll try to keep it in some reasonable order. But, um, when we're looking at $750 million of current permit valuations in the queue, that's a fact. That is $750 million worth of construction that is titled residential but is likely going to be unmitigated lodging. Throughout this town, I look at all the neighborhoods, and some I've approved, some I've been a part of being on the approving body, but none of them were approved to be mini hotel neighborhoods that were unmitigated for any of the employee or traffic or demands that they create. And every single, people keep asking, what's the connection? Well, every single residential home that we see come through that has more floor area ratio underground than on the surface is now being marketed as, um, an STR. It's no longer that the employee demand is being driven from new commercial growth, it is coming from residential growth. And, um, you know, I understand how difficult it is to say, but why now and why draw the line? But a line has to be drawn somewhere. Whether it was 30 days from now or two weeks from now, you stop the bleeding somewhere. The number of letters and emails I've received of people saying, "I am buying based on the economic value of this as a commercial interest, not as a residential neighborhood, not as where a neighbor gets to know a neighbor." I have heard repeatedly from people about bad STR renters who don't pay attention to the no dogs in the HOA and let their dogs run out every week. And the neighbors are having to confront a new neighbor each week who shows up at midnight with the stereo blaring in the car, saying, "Is that the place? Is that the place? Where's the place?" You know, there are real impacts, whether folks would like to think that there are or not, to the fabric of the community, to, to the nature of the town. Throughout this past summer, as much as anything, we've heard about over tourism, that the impacts were such that people weren't enjoying their own town anymore, that people were stressed so badly for the lack of employees and the lack of, of working doubles or having to work doubles for those lack of employees was killing them, that, that they didn't want to work here, whether they had housing or not. And I want to settle one real big myth here that keeps going around. I won't be speaking for others, but I, no, I personally don't believe that this will create a lot of affordable housing, or that people who buy a $3 million condo or home are going to rent to a ski bum. This is about the continued community impacts, to me, that will continue and grow, grow worse. I think this is the last question of whether Aspen is a community or is it a commodity? And do we all just take our little piece of that commercial activity out with us and say that we're not damaging the community? We have transportation systems that we've all invested millions of dollars in to deliver people without cars, hopefully to the core. But now, we're, we're sending the jobs throughout every inch of our valley, upper valley, and telling those people to please drive up there because the transportation doesn't serve those. We're hearing a lot of fear from people who already have a unit or a condo in what I think we'd call our lodging zones. And I do not think those are at risk. These are places that were built for lodging. They have a front desk, they have someone on site, they are condo hotels. But the idea that every residential neighborhood is now eligible to be a condo hotel without a front desk, without anyone on site, and pay residential property taxes is not accurate. It's not fair. When we look at the saving the last of the small lodges in town, and they're paying three times a higher property tax rate because they are considered commercial, but the condo renting weekly right across the street as an STR only pays residential property taxes? Is that fair to the school district, or the fire district, or the ambulance district? But even more so, is it fair to the small lodge owner? These are inequities that are in our system, and they're real. And I think that it's appropriate for us to take, to take, to take some action. When the purchases of residential properties are not for residential purposes, they are for commercial activities, that is something, as a leader, as a community council member, I have to take a look at. I have to say, what does that do to our town in 10 years, and 20 years, and 30 years? Should it be a real community or not? I've looked a lot through the Aspen Area Community Plan, something we all put together, a lot of work and a lot of focus groups, and a lot of effort and compromise. There's not a chapter on STRs. There is no bold point that says we should turn all of Red Mountain into lodging for Aspen. There's nothing that says the West End should all become short-term commercial activities or any other neighborhood in our town. That it's not something that we promote it. And actually, what they promote in the community plan is type of a cap of numbers of people visiting and loving the area and being here at a given time. Not that we should have endless numbers, that, that we should have just whatever growth we possibly can. I think it's good to cut back on the demand for employees rather than say, how can we constantly build more? And if anyone in this group thinks that, pardon me, I've listened for hours and a half. But if anyone thinks that the resources that the city has now and deployed as quickly as possible with the existing 74 Burlingame units coming online for sale this fall of 2022, with our efforts to put the money into the lumberyard at maximum density for 310 units, that is not going to be something we can afford with the resources we have at all right now. Burlingame 3, yep, it's under construction, but all the money coming back from Burlingame 3 and all the Wheeler, excuse me, the real estate transfer tax for housing, that'd be lucky to be a down payment. And we'll have to go to a public vote to even see if we can extend those taxes long enough to support any bonding. So people who think that Aspen, and Aspen alone, is going to really improve this affordable housing shortage that has, that is really coming in many ways from the free market down valley. The free market is no longer a safety valve for people down valley. Down valley workers are taking a lot of really good, and I appreciate it, good-paying jobs good-paying jobs in the mid-valley. And there's really not that much reason to come all the way up to Aspen anymore to work, to make your living, to do your things. So we have to sit here and think about what type of community we're going to have in the future. And communities die a death of a thousand cuts. It's no one person, it's no one activity, but it's slowly just not really having real neighborhoods. We hear from people all the time who are concerned, even some who spoke tonight, who've told us, "I don't want this problem on the construction of single-family homes to slow down, but I sure don't want STRs in our neighborhood." And these are contradictory messages that we have to get. No, I don't think that taking the time to get these right and direct the future of our community will restore a lot of AH options. I simply do not believe that. But it does give us a chance to manage something that right now is unmanageable, it's unmitigatable, it's unserviceable, and it's demanding more and more employees every day of the week. I'm going to try and get my last thoughts here. But the effort that I see coming from some folks seems to be that every residence in this town should be for rent. It should all be a hotel. We should be Hotel Aspen. You know, you can check in, but you can never leave. But once we start saying that you're making LLCs or buying the home to be an STR based on its income-producing revel, the county assessor by state law reassesses everyone's property taxes two years, and it's based on the market sales, the market comparables. So suddenly, the remaining family who wants to stay in their home and not rent it is going to be property taxed based on the resale value of the STRs around them. That's not really very fair either. That hits people pretty hard, too. So there's a lot of reasons. It's a really conflicting subject. I'm sorry to my colleagues for taking too long. But I want to say, there's a lot of things that do need to be looked at and will be looked at. And we've seen the other counties, the mountain communities, have these exact same really tough hearings and come out with some decent, reasonable regs. And those sort of things are, is it only occupied? Do you have to have an owner there? Or can it be an LLC? Where is the location? Is it an appropriate location? What is the frequency? A lot of these people are saying, hey, it's okay if you want to do this for 45 days a year or 60 days a year, but not 52 weeks a year. And there are places that are saying that, is there a reasonable cap on numbers? Is there a total amount appropriate for a community? I don't know the answer to any of those questions, but I want time to look at it. And I've heard one other big thing, people saying, what's the emergency? Why do this? Well, I think it was around 2005 when the county decided to rechange their code, and they, I could have the year wrong. But they decided not to do a moratorium. Way too upsetting, way too upsetting to everyone. Well, they're still dealing with vested rights and underlying zoning of the older homes that got something into the system 15 years ago or 17 years ago, that the Board of County Commissioners is having to look at 15,000 square foot homes that people can achieve. They have to buy the TDR to get there, but their underlying zoning, because they did not do a moratorium, allowed just a floodgate of massive development on Red Mountain. And maybe that's not something that bothers to people anymore. Maybe we're Monster Homes USA anymore. But the effort to tame the size of those monster homes didn't succeed because they were unwilling to take the public outrage. And I understand there's outrage. And I understand it cuts everyone in a different way somehow. But I think there's actually, right now, a lot of fear over not much. These permits have been extended for everyone who has been doing short-term rentals in a reasonable manner. We have the funding availability, and the ordinance gives our manager the ability to expend those funds, to hire the people we need to do this in a timely fashion. But it's not something that we can just look the other way on and tell people, we're doing our job and we're looking out for the 20-year future of our community. Thank you for understanding. It is a tough issue for all of us.
Thank you, Rachel. Send to the table.
First, thank you guys all for coming in.
Well done.
A lot of familiar faces in the crowd, I'm sure, a lot more on there. And our listening and contemplation of this issue did not start tonight or yesterday. For me, it didn't start two years ago when I began this role or four years ago when I ran. But it's been a decade plus of listening to our community. And while this came forward quickly and abruptly, and I understand how that can be received as very difficult and shocking, the underlying need for this moment has been anything but sudden. I mean, it's, and I've heard it, and I've talked to so many of you about this, the hemorrhaging of our community, our character, what we love about this place. It's as though the town is at the bottom of a giant dam and there's been a crack. And as the water's been coming through for the last several decades, it's been slowly eroding our community. And in the last two years, the dam broke. And those pressures have gotten way worse. And every day, I hear from people who have had the fear that you guys have now, which I feel and I hear, because they don't know if they'll be able to stay here. And it's not just the bartender or the liftie or the ski instructor. Now it's the owners of the restaurants. It's probably owners of some of your guys' companies. And I hear it from people that probably bought or had homes designed by you guys as well, that, hey, yeah, I built a beautiful $15 million home. But if the people that I love are gone, guess what? I'm gone, too. And so our opportunity is to stand in and do something about that. And, I mean, Rachel, community or commodity? It's not in question. When they were painting Fat City on the planes at the airport, or when Sheldon and Edwards, back in the early 60s, made some huge changes that at the time drew a room of really angry people. And we look back now and think, wow, they really developed a model that worked. That in a town with some of the greatest growth and wealth pressures in the world, we maintained a diverse, full, lived-in community that we fucking love. That model's broken. It's been broken. That's not your fault. And it doesn't mean that all STRs are bad or all development is bad. It doesn't mean that rich people are bad. Wealth has brought a ton of great things to our town. There's no culture in a 7,000-person town anywhere in the world that I've been like this. But the impacts of the residential sector and development are fighting all of our community needs. There's no fault of your own. And I wish that piecemeal, I could say that we could bring about the change necessary to ensure community for the 50 years. But the truth is, we and those before us have failed to do that. And I became convinced that what we need to do that, what we need to tell our whole community, including you, is that we need the space, we need the container to really build a new system that works for all of you and everyone else and guarantees that our community can continue in a way we're proud of for another 50 years. And that space may come with some pain. But you're all invited to it. You are part and parcel to it. I have a lot of respect for people in this room, and we are here to work with you through it. But I do believe the space is necessary, and for that reason, I will be supporting this.
And if I can, one thing I forgot, because, thank you, Skippy, for reminding me. I just wanted to say, it's really hard to hear how many people want to buy in to the community that we have very carefully curated for so many years with very tough regulations and tough items. I mean, whether it's been downzoning or size or mitigation. This town was created on purpose with tough decisions and tough investments over the past 30 years. And for close to 30 years that I've been at the table, I have never participated in or supported a moratorium. And I'm only doing so now because I understand the precipice that we're on and the severity of this issue if it's not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Skippy.
Board? First off, thank you all for coming tonight. It's been painful listening to some people talking about how they might lose a livelihood. We have to put all of this in balance. I think my driving document is the Aspen Area Community Plan. Cam, I think, mentioned it's from 2012. But if you read it now, I think you'll see that the values expressed there are still every bit as much a part of the fabric of our community. And it calls for a balance. And we're out of balance. The commercial, used to be, the commercial development used to be the driving force of this town, and now it's residential. We've heard, all STRs are not the same. And we're not, we were presented with a heat map of where the STRs are. A lot of them, most of them are where they should be in the, around the core, around the gonla. In essence, all of our lodges, our legacy lodges, the Gant, the Elps, Aspen Square, North and Nell, all of those are STRs. It might be condo hotels, but in essence, they're short-term rentals. And what has happened with our community, I think, is that our neighborhoods have become commercial cores. They've taken, the short-term rentals have changed the character of neighborhoods. And there's been a conflation of workforce housing, short-term rentals, and construction. Nobody here expects that a piece of property that was $10 million and is being rented out as an STR, that we're going to convert that to a workforce housing rental. No, nobody expects that. But what that piece of property does is it demands employees to maintain the level of service they expect and demand. And we've driven the ability of those employees to live in our community. We've driven them out of our community. Now we can't get enough employees to staff restaurants. Restaurants are shutting down when they used to be open seven days a week. Retail's shutting down. You can't, the ARC is shutting down because the city can't hire enough employees. The pressures on our community are not unique to Aspen. John mentioned what I thought was a seminal piece of information or an article that really focused the attention on it. But we were aware of that before that, the July Outside Magazine, 2017. There was another really in-depth article recently, I think in November, Outside Magazine, that again points to the effects of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are commercialization of residential neighborhoods in some instances. In some instances, they allow the full-time working resident in Aspen to afford to take vacations. We're asking for a pause. We're asking for the ability to do an in-depth study to find out what kind of regulations are appropriate for us to maintain the fabric of our community. And that's what is out of balance, and what I feel and I think other people at this table feel is that we've lost the balance in the Aspen Area Community Plan. We've lost that balance that it calls for. It has called for decades. And when you lose, I'll just put it here. The fabric of my community is not for sale. We are working very hard here to supply workforce housing and to conflate STRs and construction of mega homes, very expensive properties, to, for people to think that we're going to move employees into that and that we're going to mitigate workforce housing because of these STRs and these homes. It's not the case. Nobody expects that. Nobody realistically thinks that an employee will be living in an $8 million condo. But what that $8 million condo does is it demands, it creates, it creates jobs in a time. I listened to you for two and a half hours. Now please listen to me.
I got three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're elected here to make hard decisions. We sit through hours and hours and hours of meetings. We read thousands of pages of documents. We're familiar ourselves with what's going on in other mountain communities. We look at what other communities have tried to do. I've been studying the short-term rental effects since probably 2017, 2016. Nobody's come up with the right answer. No one's come up with a silver bullet that solves everything. And that's going to be the case here. But what we're asking for, to continue the status quo. We're not telling you, starting tomorrow, you can't rent your properties. We're telling you that, starting tomorrow, we're going to start looking at what we can do to get this community and the fabric of our community back in balance with what the Aspen Area Community Plan has defined as what is a healthy community. It'll take time, and we will be reaching out. We will have public comment. We will have public engagement. That is the whole goal of taking the policy to do it. We're not rushing to a decision here. We're not saying, starting tomorrow, you can't rent your property. We're extending that through the summer of 2022. We want to study this thoroughly. We want to listen to the impacts. We want to make the best decision we can with the information that we have. We hope that it'll do the best we can to preserve our community, the fabric of our community. We have two, we have three goals, but two of our goals that we have determined as top-tier goals are workforce housing and climate. And if you look at the effects of construction, $750 million in the queue, that's a lot of ongoing work. And these homes aren't built overnight. It takes a long time. You guys are, you guys are the experts, and we'll be tapping into you, hopefully, in a collaborative effort. But we need, I think, to put a pause on it so that we can, we saw what happened a few years ago when there was going to be a moratorium on downtown, and there was a rush of applications that have taken decades to really clear out. So I think it is an emergency. I think that we're losing the quality of our town. We've already driven free-market residential workers out of this town. They can't, no way can you afford to be in the free market here. And I think that it's at a point where there is no segue. There's no graduating anymore from workforce housing, subsidized housing into free market. There is, maybe if you go to Down Valley, but the unmitigated capitalism, I think, destroys the working class. It takes advantage of the working class, and I think that's what happened, what's happening in Aspen is that the ability and freedom to make a dollar does not trump our community fabric. I think it's more important than that. We will be looking closely at different, all kinds of different categories of short-term rentals. And while we're doing that, we had two-day retreat on workforce housing. We had senior staff. We are ongoing. It takes a long time to produce housing. The lumberyard is in, two years into it. We're looking at 300 units. Somebody mentioned density. Somebody else said, build on open space. Well, those are two values the Aspen Area Community Plan are in conflict on. They don't want density. We don't want density, but we do want open space. So how can we house people, workforce, which started a few years ago at 60%? And now it's supposed to be a substantial portion of your workforce to be housed within the urban growth boundary? Well, if you don't have density and you preserve your open space... Well, if you don't have density and you preserve your open space, something has to change. So there needs to be adjustments. If we still value our working class, if we still value having workers live within the urban growth boundary, we need to do something to preserve it. And I think this is, this is an opportunity to take the time that's necessary to come up with measures, permanent measures, that will mitigate as best as we can with the focus on the fabric of our community. And that's, that's where I am. And I understand that there are people concerned, and there's anxiety, and people are saying that their emotional well-being is at stake. But I can guarantee you, the emotional well-being of a lot of people is in question, is in jeopardy because of their inability to find housing in the community that they love. So I know it is, it's difficult for the development community and the real estate community to understand how we have arrived at this, but I'm going to support this because I think it is an emergency.
Thanks, Ward.
Very good. Thank you, Ward. I'll have brief comments. I agree with a lot of what was said by other councilors up here, and I don't want to reiterate it. You know, I'm going to take these as two different issues. When it comes to the short-term rentals, again, you know, we allowed the ability for these permits to go forward, not only the 1,200 that were existing, but today, taking over 180 new permits. I think what we've done is facilitated that as best we could, and I think in a good interest for our community. So you're right. If there are people that are out there in the United States or across the world that are wondering if they should buy Aspen property because they can turn it around and short-term rent it, and they're turned off from that, I'm going to have to live with that. I'm carried about the people that are here now, that have their permits, that live here, the residents of Aspen, and those are the ones that are going to be able to go forward and continue to do what they need to do in order to create their livelihood and maintain their residency in our community. That's important to me. And as we go forward and we look at further regulations on vacation rentals, those are the people that are going to still be important to me. So regardless of what you've read, what you've heard, or what you think, this council does not have the intention of stopping the STRs that are appropriate in our community. So everybody needs to just take a break here when we talk about 1,400. The actual scope of what we're trying to impact is very narrow. The largest majority of those permits will remain intact. That I can promise you. We are not looking to eliminate this completely. We are looking to modify it and amend it so it works best for our community. The evidence is there. Anybody that asks if you have evidence or data, yes, it is there. One data point for you is this: In the city of Aspen, 30% of our free-market housing is lived in. 30%! And dropping. Which leads me to the next point. The reason that we are taking a pause on accepting residential applications is so that we can amend the code to better align it with the AACP. Again, for those of you that think that, hey, your business should stop, you tell your clients that you need to continue to keep that permit ready to go and get it in perfected shape. Because what we're going to allow our community development department to do is to get a little bit of the stack that looks like this now, down. So your permitting process may not be slowed, because as you know, as you know, and as you know, it takes months to get it through a review process right now, because we have $750 million of permits either in works or in that stack. So, listen, my heart goes out, when I hear the stories of people talking about their business going away, their livelihood being jeopardy, in jeopardy, all of our hearts go out to that. That's not our intention here. But I will encourage you. This is not going to last. We're going to get out of this as soon as we can, and that's on both fronts, on STR rentals, on applications for residential. These are not going to be sweeping changes, but they are going to better align us with our AACP, and we're going to be doing something that strengthens our community going forward. I truly believe that. I'm elected up here to do the best I can for my community, my entire community. I wouldn't be, I don't go into this lightly, and I wouldn't be considering this at all if I thought that it wasn't in the best interest. I really appreciate all of you coming out tonight. I appreciate your comments. It gives us great insight and input into how we can best utilize this process to get the best outcomes for our community. That's our intention. It comes with pain for both our community and for us. This is not easy for us, and, you know, I want to be, have a cooperative relationship as we go forward. The more input and cooperation that we get, the sooner that we can get out of this, and that's our intention. I thank you all so much, and I thank my fellow council members for really speaking to the issues that are brought up here so clearly. You have to understand, this is not easy, but this is in the best interest. We will level the playing field. We will all move forward together. Yes, we will.
Want to entertain a motion?
At this time, we can.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 27, series of 2021.
With the language as-
As amended. Yeah, as written.
Okay. Earlier, I asked for discussion around the length of term for this. I thought that, again, a shorter timeframe would work better, but I leave that to my fellow council members, and I will support what is supported by majority here, without a doubt.
Just to give voice, I heard your suggestion. I appreciate it. I also heard Ward's suggestion about possibly extending the date. Ultimately, I think that extending the date would cause a run on the thing that we're trying to draw a line in the sand in. And the reality of the short-term rental space is reservations have been being taken for the summer already. So we're adding enough stress here. I don't think that us moving that date will have a meaningful or tangible difference on outcomes, but I think it will add stress to this community that's unnecessary.
So you want to maintain September 30?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We have a motion?
I would second.
And I have a second. Is there further discussion by council this evening?
I would offer as an amendment to extend the date one week for applications of STRs.
I, as a secondor, I would not see that as a friendly amendment. I don't support that.
Nor would I.
Nor would I.
Okay. So, don't have a second on your amendment.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please, for ordinance number 27?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Merritor.
Yes. Thank you.
Would you accept a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, please.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second. Can we have a roll call vote for adjournment?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, all for coming in on line as well. Thank you, guys.